John.
I think.
She's still be on the phone, I think. While on her way. Yeah.
Driving from her.
Oh, I see her. And Christina Martinez is joining us by phone. And Ed will join us in person when she gets here. I'm looking for a motion to establish the agenda.
So.
Second it. Any discussion? All in favor, I'm going to keep by saying aye, students.
Aye.
And board.
Aye.
Christina, don't worry about responding unless you want to because I am not going to have to go off mute while you're driving. So I'll do the vote without you unless you pipe in and we hear you. Any opposed? So that's a two zero four zero. The agenda is established. Next up, we have recognition.
Great. We're going to begin, we have three recognitions tonight and we're going to begin with our school's foundation. We had a wonderful, I get the opportunity monthly to meet with the foundation and the foundation board. And I get the chance to work alongside them actually in this office from the leadership with Bridget Olson. And Tammy. A mom of a school, kids and Tammy Shoup. It's been a long day. But we get an opportunity to really think about how do we invest in our district in many different ways. And I know that we sometimes have the misunderstanding from those who don't know Mercer Island as well, that somehow because of property taxes and property value or whatnot, that we must be a more wealthy district overall. And as we know, we've looked at, you know, that's not how school funding works. But one way that we've been able to really work to at sometimes bridge a gap and at other times spill holes and at other times just add enhancements is through our foundation. And I recall my very first, my recollection of the foundation. I was a newly hired principal still in Colorado, just following the district. And there was that the first bridge I brought in four hundred and thirty some odd thousand dollars. And that was coming out of the recession and a huge investment. And I was coming from a district with sixty thousand kids and the foundation come close to raising that. And it was a fairly affluent district as well. And when I got here, I realized why that happens in this because it's not a machine. It is about a bunch of people who care a lot about education. So tonight Tammy Shoup and Bridget Olson are here on behalf of the foundation and the foundation board. They are currently in the key leadership positions as the staff. And I want to begin just with a thank you before you do anything with a check or whatnot. On behalf of all the students, the staff and this community for all your tireless work. And put in a plug that this coming Saturday, a week from this Saturday, they're kind of going in a different direction this year rather than having the traditional phone-a-thon. They're going to have a great event down at the funny farm to bring together community as we continue. So with that, I'll turn it over to the two people.
That's what I was going to say. I want to thank Maggie and Christina who is online and Deb who are going to join us. And Jody and Deb, you're welcome to come. We'd love to have you. Deb is going to speak for a few minutes. That'd be enough too. Thank you for that. You know, we are, we are presenting our big check again. We're excited to do that. This service is super rewarding for all of us. We would be doing it if it wasn't both of our kids went through the district here. And it's amazing to see where these dollars are going. Just a couple of kind of highlights from last year, because let's check, you know, what we raised last year. You know, we have our angel donors, which are the five thousand over donors. And we increased our angel donors by eight people, which is, is, you know, that's a big check to write for a lot of people. This year, just FYI, we think, I think we have five ten thousand dollar donors. So they are creating a fund just for the fall event to do matching. We're super excited about that. We awarded last year the most teacher grants that had ever been awarded before, sixty six teacher grants. And there probably were a couple of stragglers during the year, people, great job. But that was the highest number ever. We established a partnership with you, Deb, which I think helped us leverage funding. We, they gave us, I think, what, how many, three or four games, about a hundred tickets for each game. We won, one of those games, we gave all of the tickets to teachers, which was super exciting. We, then we used the others to kind of leverage fundraising, which was great. We really have a great relationship with Ian. Thank you. We have a great relationship with Ian. We work with him on getting into the classes. We kind of split the duty, but Ian gets in there too to report for the district. We go into classes where grants are happening and we're able to share that on our social media. And then our constant contacts that go out to the community. And he has, he has made that a lot easier on us. Last year, our breakfast, we're re-growing, we're rebuilding that breakfast. When we left and I, you know, when we, that last breakfast before COVID was twenty nineteen, we had over six hundred people standing room only in that gym. And then we didn't have the breakfasts for three years. We came back in twenty two, three and had three hundred and twenty five people. So really it was really rebuilding there. Last year we had four hundred and seventy five. So, you know, this year, you know, it's, it's a cool event. So, and I think you all probably can. We've expanded business sponsorships. This was, this was pretty staggering. So last year we had seventy seven thousand dollars in business sponsorships. When I started, there were probably maybe eight to ten, not very many. That was within twenty fifteen. And last year we had twenty four sponsors, seventy seven thousand. This, sorry, two years ago. Last year, we, or now, sorry, I'm saying this hard. Last year we had twenty four sponsors, seventy seven thousand. This year we have forty six sponsors. Eighty six thousand five hundred. So some of those are in the smaller range. But I mean, it's, we're getting up towards a hundred thousand of what we are raising in sponsorship, which is fantastic. And I wish she was there, but we had a wonderful board member, Jill Ashton, who really drove that for us. And we miss her. She was on the board for a long time. She rolled off. The other thing I wanted to mention was Susan Kaplan, who was the president of the school board. She was the president of the foundation. She was on PTA. She had a very long and involved life here. I'm sorry. And then her husband, her daughter are still here. She passed away last year. You probably know. Her family created a fund for the foundation and it's specifically going to teacher grants. So we're going to use that this year and help out our schools and trying to get us, we were trying to cap last year of sixty six teacher grants. We want more than that. A couple of challenges that we faced last year, like just, you know, there's always something, right? We've got CRT and LLM and everything. There was definitely rumbling and it's usually coming from my board members because my kids are not in the district. I didn't want to, but you know, a little bit of the wokeness and the things that, you know, are required to be in our schools that some people don't like. I think we lost an angel for that reason. Couldn't really combat that because it's, it is what it is. We had, we had a handful of people bring back that they have a little mixed reaction to the new math curriculum. We spent some time and we kind of armed our board with how to respond to that. And that was just a little, I thought you guys might want to know that. And I've sat through a lot of meetings, so I, you know, I know that some of it is definitely not true. And then we have a little bit about, so we had our, we had our elementary pancake breakfast last year. And we combined into one, so it was an all elementary, raised less, had a lot of people. It was a great community building event. And that was kind of how the principals were really behind that. They loved bringing everybody together. So we're, we're kind of trying to figure out what we're going to do this next year. That's kind of it. We were just excited to present the check.
Anything for the board.
Yeah. Do you guys have any questions?
Before we do the presentation.
Yeah. Just thank you so much. Like it's great to, it's great to hear there was a teacher grants last year. And I would look to at some point hear about some of the things that teachers did with that grant money. Yeah, I know that, that certainly has benefited. We're fun with field trips and, you know, coming in. Yeah, yeah. We, you know, we do post that on our website and I could probably come in with a whole list, but I could send you a parent's list of singular, not many live.
I actually think, I, I can look at it on the website, but it's also just a good reminder for everybody else that they can look on the website.
For sure. Yeah, thank you so much. Yes.
That actually is exactly what I was going to say. Both points, thank you as well as, I'd like to hear more about some of the projects, the process. And also to extend, you know, that the dollars are distinguishable from other districts. Having teacher grants, does, is that broadcast when it comes to recruitment? Is that a difference, a point of differentiation in terms of attracting staff to the district? And then the second thing is on corporate sponsorship, it sounds like it was a really strong year. And I encourage, if you haven't already done so, to reach out to Riot, the largest corporation that's been headquartered here, you know, ever in terms of headcount and I think a natural partnership for the district. And we'd like to see a strong relationship run forward.
Yes, we have a board member who's at Fungy and he knows people at Riot. I can talk to you about that later.
Yeah. Well, thank you, thank you guys so much for doing everything that you do and like helping fill in the gaps and like really providing all these opportunities for our students.
Yeah. Thank you for everything you do. Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, just echo everyone else's thanks. Like the foundation is really one of the jewels of our island to the, the way that you support students and support teachers and educators. I just want to let the record reflect and send my parents in Ohio, like sandwiched in her that weekend. But otherwise I would definitely be there, big supporter of the foundation and so proud of your work and the time. I know how much time and effort goes into serving on the board of a foundation like this. And it's why I like recognize how much of your own time that you put into it to make a success for our students and our educators and how important that is. I wish that I will have our board actually watch this. Fantastic. You know, it's a community. We're really, really lucky to have a generous community who prioritizes education. So hopefully we're, we're, we're about three times, at the point we are right now, about a month and maybe not even quite a half into our new fiscal year. We're a little over two hundred thousand dollars. I think last year we were fifty, eighty, ninety. So we're really having a good year so far. Yeah. So no, I just, I just want to say, you know, looking at it, what I love, obviously in terms of the total number, but also really focusing on participation and that really every dollar, you know, as, as we choose. We all have different discretionary amounts that we, that we can spend and really, you know, encouraging the businesses and community members whose kids, who either don't have kids in the schools yet, or don't have a plan on having kids, or, you know, are, are past it. And recognizing that, that every dollar they put into our schools is actually benefiting them. Not only is it benefiting our students, but it's benefiting their property values. Because we know that so many are here and our property values benefit us all. Or I should say the growing property, property values benefit us all. And so, you know, we're in this together as a community. So I would just thank you for everything that you guys do. I know that you do a big reach out. I'm really looking forward to the event. It's fun to see people and get together. I hate making phone calls just per, I hate making phone calls. Yes, yes, yes. But no, I think it's great to keep things fresh and try new things. And, and hopefully we can see a lot of people there and, you know, really, really encourage the giving and bringing the community together as, as times or, you know, others trying to break us apart. So this is something that I think everyone gets behind. So thank you for leading it. And I know it's not always easy, but it's very appreciated. I think that if people do go to the website and look at the list and speaking with teachers, we're so excited every year to get the grants so that they can do a field trip or they can do, bring in an author or they can do a special unit in their class or the high school, the science programs and all sorts of things. There's, there's something for everybody and it's, it's things I know teachers, because they tell me, dream of being able to do and often without the funding from the state. So we get the funding from our community and so they're able to bring that passion to our students.
That's absolutely right. Yeah. And I'm looking at the list right now and it's very, it's an awesome list of like all the fun and extra educational things we like our kids to be doing. And it covers special education as well as each school.
There's so much. We have a fund for special education too. We are right now in the grant process, accepting applications from teachers. We love working with the PTA on that. It's so much fun to just co-plan things, being able to, you know, I got a couple of eight thousand dollar grants this year, which is a little high. So, but we're looking forward to, you know, and, and the district, I mean, Andrew, we last year had Hey. And I can't remember if Matt was there. We have the learning services with us and we, Melissa will be with us this year. So we just all get together and I think a lot of you have stepped through that. That's a really great process. Thank you. So this year.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. All right. So our next recognition tonight. During the summer, it gets a little tricky sometimes to keep track on different awards and recognition that either our staff might receive or students. And so actually our next two were ones that came in over the summer. And both of these individuals actually tried to fly under the radar a little bit, but they got caught up by either the newspaper or WIAA or others. And so I want to introduce you to Molly Dudley. Over the summer, it came to our attention that Molly received one of the highest honors that a youth can earn in terms of, of our country. And so she, through her love of the outdoors, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Something that she grew up with, obviously, it sounds like from a very supportive family who also loves the outdoors. She was awarded the prestigious Congressional Award Gold Medal in July at the US Congress Summit in Washington DC. The Congressional Award Gold Medal, as I said, is the honor bestowed by the Congress upon youth recognizing remarkable initiative, service and achievement. And for the last two years, Molly has been, is one of seven hundred twenty four gold medal honorees. She's been working diligently to attain the medal, which requires four hundred hours of public service, two hundred hours of personal development and two hundred hours of physical fitness and five days and four nights of expedition and exploration. She led, as I understand, a great place that I love greatly. Her outdoor activities took her to the Washington Trails Association, where she led backpacking trips through the Olympic Peninsula and helped garner, garner this award. I'll give her a chance. I won't give her a quote from the newspaper. I'll allow you to talk a little bit more about that. But as I understand it, at the summit, you also got to meet with Senators Patty Murray, Maria Cantwell and our Congressman Adam Smith, who were able to meet you as well. And so when I saw that come across in the newspaper, others, Molly couldn't be more honored to have you in the school district, but just in wow of what you've accomplished and grateful that you received this. With that, can you tell us a little bit more about how you earned this award and the process?
Yeah, of course. Thank you so much. This award has been a really great experience for me because while working with the Washington Trails Association, I was out breaking rocks, setting trail and kind of establishing like loss fees of environmental sustainability. And this gave me a lot of appreciation for just all the work that goes into these everyday services, like hiking trails that we sometimes take for granted, but also benefit our lives in so many ways. I also spent time working with our Mercer Island Cub Scout troop and helping establish principles of environmental engineering for their curriculum. And I think I would really just encourage other Mercer Island students to get involved with this program. I think it has been just such a great experience for me and can really change the lives of so many people.
And that's a direction that I think you want to go with environmental sustainability, as I read, and some other things in the future. Is that a passion you want to continue to pursue?
Absolutely. You know, as you mentioned, I got, when I was receiving the award, I got a chance to go to Washington DC and meet with our congressional representatives and our senators. And I am definitely really interested in pursuing that like public policy aspect. Because, you know, one person can go out and work on the trail, break the rocks. But then, you know, that only makes so much of an impact until you can establish these policies that do make a larger impact.
Board, I'll open it up to you.
Just very impressed. One of my teenage kids has, okay, twenty eight years old now, has done some volunteering with the WTA and I know what hard work that is. So that you've done that much is really impressive at your age. So I look forward to hearing more about what you do. How did you hear about this opportunity?
Well, I'm part of another program called the National Leadership Council. And so that's just one of the awards they kind of promote to that program. Congratulations.
So I enjoy the outdoors quite a much, quite a bit myself and just came back in August from hiking John Muir Trail. So I certainly understand the value of trails. I guess on that, one suggestion that I have, you haven't read, is a book called On Trails by Robert Moore, who lives in Hafner today. That, the Amazon snippet said it's a wonder, a wondrous exploration of how trails help us understand the world and has sort of six different storylines about different types of trails and what it says about biology and I enjoyed it very much.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm impressed that this is, and you know, if you're lucky, you can see, even see like your love for the outdoors and you're just talking about it. And I think it's so important to, you know, to see you follow your passion like this. I spent my, you know, working career in, in public service at the State Department. And I can only encourage people who are enthusiastic about the idea of public service to go into it. You know, and, and they'd be lucky to have you. And, you know, we as a nation would be lucky to have leaders, student leaders like you coming along and then becoming the young leaders that we need to shepherd it from Jordan and Sarah.
Thank you.
So can you stay for just a bit and we're going to do another honorary and then we'll do a picture. But you also have some fans as background you want to introduce.
These are my biggest number one fans. My mom in the black and my dad in the green shirt.
Thanks for being here. Please join me and congratulate Molly. And next I'm going to bring up Mr. Gavin Creed. Yes, please. Many of you know Gavin as an educator in our school district and certainly are also our boys' basketball coach. He's an alumni of Mercer Island High School. And true to form for him and not surprising, he did not announce this to anyone. And I know that he must be extremely proud to have been honored with this by the National High School Basketball Coaches Association. And when I saw it came, come through, I knew we needed to bring him to you all tonight just to see this. So the recognition that he won was the John Wooden Legacy Award. And this recognition seeks to honor scholastic basketball coaches around the country who are educators and have achieved excellence on the floor, in the classroom and in the community that further embody the characteristics and legacy of former UCLA basketball coach, John Wooden. The criteria for this award are rooted in the ideals of education, longevity, character, service and excellence. And it was this past July when Gavin was selected at the Washington State John Wooden Award Dinner. And, you know, there's, I, I think that those who know the legacy of John Wooden know that he was, you know, one of the winning, most winningest basketball coaches in NCAA history with all of the championships. But when people talk about John Wooden, they rarely talk about the coach. They usually talk about the person. And to be honored with this award, Gavin, I hope you know, I'm sure you understand the gravity of it, but I hope you know how proud we are and excited we are that you received this award. So with that, I'll just turn it over to you as well.
Well, yeah, I have a little prepared statement I'll read. But yeah, thanks for recognizing me tonight, Fred and the board. It's really humbling to be recognized by your coaching peers for an award like this. The Washington Basketball Coaches Association let me know last spring that I was the nominee for the John Wooden Award. In fact, I had never heard of the award. It's a relatively new award that's given out annually across the country for each state and, and both boys and girls, coaches. But obviously, like you said, being named to a John Wooden Award is, is, is a pretty big deal. So getting this news in the early spring from the WICKA Executive Director, Naylan Sue, the Hall of Fame coach from Outlake Terrace, was a boost I needed at the time. As coaches, we're all pretty beat up mentally and physically at the end of a season. Typically reflecting on, you know, how we could have advanced farther in the playoffs or some of the trivial things like that. But, or maybe stewing over a parent email that might drop in about playing time or something like that after the season. But receiving this recognition helped me bounce back quickly this offseason. I'm also proud that this award is not necessarily about winning. As, as you said, Fred, Mercer Island Boys Basketball has definitely done a lot of winning. In fact, fifty five winning seasons over the last fifty seven years, a lot of consistency, much before my time as head coach. But this award makes no mention of that. It's an award about community and program building and the impact that you're making on, on and off the court and in the classroom. This award is, as you said, specifically for coaches who are also educators. In reflection, there are so many people who share this award with me that deserve recognition. Mercer Island Basketball is not what it is without them. First, there's Ed Peppel. Ed Peppel led Mercer Island High School as a teacher and a coach in this basketball community for forty two years. He did a lot of winning, more than any other coach in state history, but that's not really what's important about him. He inspired thousands of other people to become their best selves, players and coaches alike. He captivated the community here on the island and he shared his gift of inspiring others with coaches and players around the state. Having founded WICKA with his peers several decades ago, that organization that, that gave me this award. Having played for, for Coach P and coached with him for all those seasons, count me as one of those people who was inspired. And he continues to drive much of what I do today in coaching and program building. Without a doubt, any inspiration that I offer to athletes or other coaches in this community. I do coach cross-country as well. I want to mention that Ava Zhang is on the team. Shout out to cross-country. That I've been doing that for ten years as an assistant coach. Or to my role as a teacher to students, Ed Peppel's a major part of that. There are too many to single off. I've had the great pleasure of coaching so many amazing student athletes who come from wonderful families. The players pour their hearts into this experience and I'm humbled when a kid makes the choice to dive into our sport. The parents have been nothing short of amazing. I'm so grateful for all the Booster Club board members and all the support that this community provides to its athletic programs. We can't run great programs without their, their dedication and their time. Great administration is vitally important to a well-run program. Craig Olson hired me sixteen years ago. I owe a great deal to him, but also one shout out Nick Wold and Lindsay Blaine, my current admins, who have been fantastic to work with. Nick has been with me for a long time, in particular, I think longer than any administrator at this point. They make, they make our job easier. I wouldn't be here about the contributions of some incredibly talented and dedicated assisting coaches. This is the secret sauce in coaching, the people who line up next to you to take on this challenge. Many dedicated assistants have been with me. I wanted to shout out to my two longest tenured coaches right now, Bernie Morris, who works at our school as a para and Stacy Edwards, who's also a track coach. People like Bernie and Stacy make this program possible and I thank them. And then lastly, just want to thank my family, my parents, Rusty and Jean are here tonight with my son Julius. My wife is unfortunately out of town for a work trip, but they've supported me through this journey for a couple of decades now. This would not be possible without that support. Coaching takes you away from your family more than you want it to. It doesn't get any easier with, with, you know, a little guy like that. Uh, this would not be possible without that support. Coaching takes you away from your family more than you want it to. It doesn't get any easier with, with, you know, a little guy like that. Um, but uh Jessica deserves a lot of credit for, for the sacrifices that she makes. Um, and her side of the family's been incredibly supportive. There are no strangers to Mercer Island Basketball either. Uh, her brother played for Ed Pepel as well. Her mom was Booster Club president once upon a time. So needless to say, family plays a vital role in this program. Um, lastly, as coaches, we do this job to serve kids and unite our communities and we're just a little bit competitive too. So we do it for that as well. Um, but I want to thank WIC for the award and for all of you for carving out the time to recognize me tonight. So thank you.
Congratulations.
I, I just, thank you. Um, and, and uh, you know, as a Mercer Island High School alum as well, uh, did not become a coach, but you know, the coach, coach, teacher, coaches are a dying breed. And it's really um a special relationship that, that I think you and you have with students. Um, or at least, you know, that, that we did with, with, when it was more common. Uh, something that, that someone who just comes in the afternoon isn't able to. So you know, we know that you make huge sacrifices to make this decision, financial sacrifices, but the things that you're giving to our community, um, our community is uh, it's, it just, it, we're, we're grateful for it. I think um, I love it when I see our teacher, coaches and, and like I said, I think there's only a few of you left, but, but um, it, it makes a huge difference in our students' lives. So thank you.
I would say congratulations. And also I can see why you are grateful, how you share this, how it worked with everybody as a nation. So, so uh, we're happy to talk with you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's do a photo. We'll start with you and then we'll bring up. It's all a little this way a little bit. You want to jump? You can jump up. Three, two, one. 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 There you go.
All right. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Parents?
Here we go. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. And then three, two, one.
Because she could tell you about, it's, it's pretty special. How to plug the public policy, public service.
Um, the last recognitions um are some of our celebrations and awarenesses uh this month. We have Learning Disabilities Awareness Month um coming up starting uh tomorrow and extending into the weekend is uh a very important observance uh for our Jewish families with Yom Kippur. We have Indigenous Peoples' Day um coming up as well. And then we have uh Rachel here this evening. We have National School Lunch Week coming up here in October. That's next week. Um, annually, we participate in various forms of the Great Washington Shakeout and that's to raise awareness about uh preparation for earthquakes uh in the state of Washington. And then we will also have National School Bus Safety Week. And that kind of coincides when we do counts for buses. Um, and our bus drivers and district have a number of things planned for our riders. Um, and rounding out the month uh is the Walling uh with the Festival of Lights. So lots going on in October. And those are our recognitions.
Thank you. Uh, and moving on to Superintendent Report.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to just update you as I mentioned in the last meeting. Um, wanted to make sure that I give a chance. Can I share my screen? I'm not sure, but I can. You should be. Sir, that's on. Maybe if you're counting from back here to catch up. All right. So I um let you know that I would come tonight with a new student enrollment update, especially as we uh turn the corner. October first is one of our big count dates. And so we're starting to see more consistent enrollment numbers and kind of catching up from, from September. Um, I always like to remind uh all of us that so much of student enrollment is anchored in our operational expectations of May. Um, everything from the financial part to the teaching and learning part. So as we've looked over time, uh, this graph hasn't necessarily changed, um, just showing our enrollment history. But it's a good reminder of kind of what the projections have looked like um and where we're trending. And so I wanted to take a little closer look at elementary. I know that's been a big conversation going to back, back year or to last year, to the long-range facility planning process. And really trying to figure out what's going to happen in our elementaries over time. We know that what is happening there is going to be a good predictor for our middle school and high school. And so what you see in the maroon color there, um, those would be the years leading up to when Northwood was built. Uh, and obviously the three schools were at max capacity, if not over. And we knew we were going to experience even more growth. And so when we opened up Northwood, which is the beginning of the darker color there, um, that's showing total enrollment in our uh schools. And then as you come down, uh, and you see, whoops, uh, when you start to see that drop off with COVID and then you start to see kind of what's happened uh since then. Uh, the good news is on all of this. There we go. Um, the good news is, um, when we look at last year, uh, the projected enrollment that Matt and the team had was three thousand eight hundred eighty students. And we averaged three thousand eight hundred eighty-one, remembering that's measured in FTE. This year's projections, as you saw in the budget that you approved, was three thousand eight hundred fifteen students. And for, as of October, we have three thousand eight hundred ninety-six uh FTE in our district. Um, that's up eighty-one compared to what we projected. Um, and the highest uh place where we're seeing the most students over projection is elementary, followed by the middle school and then the high school is also just slightly over projection as well. What that doesn't take into account is that our students who are seven period of day students don't count more. Um, and so we actually have, you know, a lot more kind of FTE that we're accounting for. But the seven periods still for our state reports only count as um, as one FTE. If we look a little closer at the numbers, um, we had a hundred and fifty students kindergarten through eleventh grade last year who left the school district. Um, that's kind of from last February through the end of the summer. But we had three hundred and fifteen students who replaced them. Uh, and so comparison to last year, we had two hundred and forty-four um students who uh arrived in our district. And it was one hundred thirty-seven that we lost. So we lost slightly more, but we gained much more uh than before. And we have three hundred fifty-seven uh seniors who graduated. And then we enrolled two hundred seventeen kindergarteners in this most recent class. If you recall, last year's kindergarten class was about one hundred eighty-nine students um on average throughout the year. Um, and so as they then matriculated up, uh, we gained students from private schools, from kindergarten to first grade. We typically see that. Um, but a number that I haven't seen in my time in the district, or at least that I recall, is that we have two hundred fifteen first graders and two hundred seventeen kindergartners. So we have more kindergartners uh than, than first graders. And if we see that bump again, we might see, you know, upwards of two hundred thirty-seven through two hundred forty um kindergarten or first graders next year, which would be outstanding. Um, so this is the number um here. We did see a large bump uh in kindergarten. We weren't anticipating those twenty-five extra kindergarteners and afforded us opportunities to add students, or excuse me, add classrooms. Um, as I said, our current first grade class grew by twenty-three. Um, and so the total class is down compared to their first grade cohort last year. But I think we're going to see that rebound uh in the following year. In second through fifth grade, um, we have one thousand one hundred twenty-six students. And that's compared to one thousand eighty-eight in last year's cohort. Um, over at the middle school, we're up seventeen students from fifth grade to sixth grade. So last year's fifth graders uh who rolled into our middle school, we gained seventeen students overall. Our sixth graders who turned to seventh grade, we gained thirteen students. And seventh graders to eighth graders, we gained twenty-one students. Um, now those were, some of those numbers are offset by others because I think, Aaron, you said seventy-some odd new middle schoolers this year at the, that IMS.
Correct. Yeah, that was, that was the high mark that we had in the last ten years.
Do you include sixth graders that are new to the island, new to the district in that number?
Yes, that would be all, all families that did not go to Mercer Island school a year before.
So our, when we look at the high school a little bit, eighth grade through eleventh grade last year, that cohort had one thousand three hundred forty-two students. When we rolled them up to ninth to twelfth grade, uh, we moved to one thousand three hundred ninety-two students uh who, who uh rolled up. Uh, again, our high school picked up uh over ninety new students this year uh who are new to Mercer Island School District. Our graduating seniors last year, three hundred fifty-seven students, we replaced them with three hundred fifty uh ninth graders. So we have a pretty stable uh enrollment, which is what we've been trying to create. Um, it is to just try to create consistency. We're not trying to grow the high school, but we are trying to maintain. And then our incoming kindergarteners, um, as I said, we have two hundred seventeen students. Um, but we had three hundred thirty-seven and so there's the delta. I learned from Superintendent Reichdahl at a meeting last week, um, the state as a whole uh graduated out about ten thousand more students than, than entered in as kindergarteners. So that phenomenon uh continues uh not just in our district, but in others.
Yep, question. So like I, I understand like on the outgoing, it can be hard to get um that many people, like percentage rates. So you know where they're going, if it's for relocating or, you know, new schools but staying here. On the incoming, hopefully it's a little bit easier to get more data to find out. Is it that they're looking, rolling in the district because they're new to the district or have they always lived here and are choosing to send their kids to the district? And in particular, at least in my view, um, it would be good to like be able to drill down on that going forward. And then in particular, I would say like the jump from fifth to sixth grade, like those numbers actually struck me is pretty low. I would have thought there would have been more who are sending uh kids to private school in the island for elementary that then decide to involve uh in the middle school. Um, and it looks like that really isn't happening in, in any certain material members. I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's only handful. Maybe people are also moving. Um, but there's only, you know, a handful that are coming in in sixth grade. Maybe those are new residents to the island. So that would be the one uh sort of additional information that I would like to know.
So in December, in your OE nine report, we will report out on uh our findings of our new families. Ian has a survey out right now, which is to all of our new families. Um, we push it hard at the beginning, leading up to that new family uh night, which is coming up next Thursday night, the seventeenth. And so we have a survey out to all of them right now. And that's one of the questions is where were you um before? Our numbers from fifth to sixth um have not necessarily been large numbers overall. And a lot of that's because a number of um private schools run K-eight private schools. They're not necessarily K-five. And so while it's an inflection point perhaps, um, the bigger inflection point for a lot of the schools, St. Monica's and others, is that eighth grade is the terminal grade and then to ninth grade. So um, I haven't looked back a long way on that one, but we, that one doesn't necessarily, that's not as large as that eighth and ninth grade here.
And I guess like, oh, then, you know, when we do the deeper dive, like eighth and ninth as well, for the same reasons. We are good to know um how many of those are returning from private school and how many of those just.
Yep. So we'll, we'll have as much data on that as, as we're getting back from there.
Yeah, I just had a question. I didn't want to stop your flow earlier, but I didn't totally understand about what happens to those first graders. What was like negative fifty-two for the first grade?
Oh, compared to the cohort before. So we have a smaller, we had a, we had a big class that came through that are now, they're second graders.
I see, okay.
Then we had a smaller kindergarten and so, yeah.
I thought you were saying some first graders left.
Kind of mentioned this before, mentioned here. Uh, and so open enrollment, uh, taking a look at kind of where we wound up there. The numbers in the table represent the open enrollment that we've gained from our opening for eighth through twelfth grade. So we had twelve eighth graders, thirteen ninth grader and so on for a total of forty-four students. Um, twenty-eight of those students came from the west side um uh of the island and sixteen came from the east side. And a couple of other numbers that are important that aren't part of the forty-four, we have sixty-two students who are enrolled in our school district whose parents work here. Um, and so they're enrolled through open enrollment um based on that provision. And we have an additional ten students who are either city uh staff, uh children of city staff members or they have other circumstances, siblings of people who are still grandfathered in from before. Or they have other circumstances, siblings of people who are still grandfathered in from before, um, and a couple of others um, from there. Um, something else that we've been tracking here for a little while is taking a look at what's happening with the withdrawal trend. And the numbers here in these percentages and these hard numbers, this does not take into account the number of kids who are offset. But just looking at um, how many students are tr- uh, tritting out of the city, of the school district. So before COVID, um, kind of that year before, we had four hundred, four point five percent of our students who left the school district. Um, for whatever reason, and those are private schools, that's moving out of state, uh, country, uh, homeschool. Then you can see in the COVID years, uh, we approached eight percent. As we started kind of coming out of COVID, uh, that number dropped. And for the last two years, we've actually been below where we were uh, pre-COVID in terms of the number of families who have left the district. When we look at that um, kind of on a bar graph, uh, looking at last year, if we take a look from February to September. Um, we can see that uh, the red bar graph there, and those are the numbers of students who left the district and which grade levels. And then you can see the number of students who entered the school district and at what grade levels um, overall. And so some of those numbers that I had shown earlier, they get offset because you have students who left or came. Um, but then you start to see where we're, where we're picking up some of our students. So some um, good things happening. We have a lot of data cleanup still to do, um, getting charts ready. But when I come back in December. Um, I'll continue to have more information and then of course we'll submit to you in your um, uh, you know, regular updates on enrollment.
Um, it's interesting that that the one slide back about the COVID era withdrawals. Um, they're lower than I would have expected them to be. And I'm wondering if you, I don't want new information or work. But if you happen to know sort of how that compares to the region and sort of just nationals, it's like.
Yeah, we lost, we lost more students overall during that, or I shouldn't say more. We were in the top kind of Bainbridge in us. Um, we lost more students during COVID than than neighboring districts, at least in the Puget Sound E S D. Um, our numbers were uh, elevated compared to other school districts. Um, I don't know about the rebound. So we haven't tracked that necessarily to say, are we now picking up more students than other districts? Um, that one's always a little tricky because we're not building new homes, whereas North Bend is still building, so is Snoqualmie Valley. But if we take a look at like, you know, probably a Bainbridge Island and Mercer Island and somewhere there's not a lot of growth, we could probably see. I haven't seen any numbers of other districts yet.
And to be fair, like my reflection is that something like seventy-five percent of the students that we lost during that first year of COVID moved off the island, like families moved away.
I don't know if it's seventy-five percent. I'd have to go back and look at those slides. We had a chunk that moved, we had a chunk that moved back. We also haven't had a chunk that went to private schools.
For sure.
Now, and that's certainly um, realistic to, or it's a reality. Um, and those have been some of the families that we're looking at. How do we continue to bring them back? And that's why we're meeting with um, French American school families and and St. Monica's families. And we're even starting to do some outreach to some of the K-eight schools off the island. As people are uh, looking to come back, especially if we know that they're islanders. Um, of what, what might that look like to do some tours of the high school?
Fair, try to add something on this next slide. It addresses Dan a little bit, because I was surprised by that plus seventeen between five and six. But if you look at that, um, it's actually thirty-seven coming in. I can't see that far, sorry. But in sixth grade, you can see that number is thirty-seven new kids. So the question more is. Why do kid people leave during that time? But it is the second highest spike given between five and six.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, like this one here is off, this one says, this is eighteen differential, that other one seventeen, that's part of the data cleanup with FTE and rounding.
Well, and I also think this starts in, your data starts in February.
Right.
So it could be kids who came in March that would be added to this data, but not a summer, a summertime change. So that might be.
So with that, um, that's really my report tonight.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you. Interesting. Um, moving on to. It's spoken another time. Board policy eighteen hundred OE four staff compensation sub level one. Thank you.
Great. I'm gonna bring up uh, Director Miller. Uh, are you on, did you say OE, sorry, OE four?
Do you have a line?
Yep. Come on up.
Okay, great. I want to send a little note to you from uh, Aaron Vattersby, who isn't here with us tonight, obviously, just about OE four. Um, we feel like we were compliant with OE four. Um, and it's just a reminder that OE four is offering competitive uh, compensation packages to to areas around us. Couple of notes, it's just a reminder that we did for the first time in a long time, and I've been in this system twenty years now. Last time it's happened that we do have a three-year deal with the M I E A. Uh, through the hard work of both the M I E A and the the district representatives, we did come up with that three-year package, which. Um, I think is rare to us, but also at these times, I think rare to other places as well. So we're really pleased about our work at that. Uh, the numbers that we negotiated with isn't as high as some of the other places you're going to see. But it's trying to find that balance between being fiscally responsible, but also trying to give what we can. Because we understand uh, the financial needs of teachers and classified staff, administrative staff, custodians, people uh, and across our district. So the three-year deal allows Matt to plan, for Matt and his team to plan. Uh, for some of those reasons, figure out how they're going to uh, address some of the, the challenges that that raises in any type of setting right now is going to um, provide. Uh, I think even with that though, and looking at our numbers, our attrition is really low. People are are wanting to be here. We have significant numbers of people applying for our, our jobs. We have an elementary pool right, open right now for teachers that have over a hundred people in it. So people want to come work here. Um, we are fully staffed, except for maybe one or two positions that are pretty hard for us to fill. Those are mainly ESAs, um, so OTs, PTs and things like that, which we are not alone in trying to find uh, people who work in schools with that type of certification. So ultimately, uh, the compensation package combined with the culture that has been developed in this district. Is making it for a valuable place for for people to want to be and want to work. And we know a lot of our people drive both through local districts in order to get here because of that. So uh, Aaron and I concur, feel like we should be in compliance with this. Uh, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that I have. If you have anything to add.
No.
Just trying to keep you guys on your toes by skipping the other ones.
Yeah.
Or say that it was because of the six o'clock public input time, did that, but no, just fooling uh, incorrectly. So thank you for.
No problem.
Follow me.
No problem.
Um, if there are not any other, any questions or concerns, um, thank you for the report. And, you know, having just gone through the um, bargaining, well, observing you all going through the bargaining process, everything that you've said certainly. As uh, we've seen, so with the promotion to find superintendent in compliance of uh, board policy eighteen hundred OE four staff compensation. So. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Uh, all in favor of finding the superintendent compliance of eighteen hundred OE four uh, staff compensation indicates by saying aye, uh, students.
Aye.
And uh, board.
I'm.
Any opposed? Uh, so that passes uh, two zero five zero. Thank you.
Great, thank you. See, we'll be calling you back up later.
You never know.
Never know, alright.
Never know.
Stay on your toes.
I'll be on my toes.
I mean, I've had a few challenges.
I'm always on.
Yes, that's true. Yeah, I've had a few other challenges today in terms of.
Stay or go to jail.
You could stay, yeah.
You're gonna stay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll get you there.
It is. That's the other challenge I have. So um, we, I don't have any notice of any public input, but it is six o'clock, so.
No public input?
No, no, sorry. Okay. That was my thinking is to be able to do that one quick.
Beautiful, good save.
All right, moving on. Partial government process monitoring board policy eighteen hundred OE nine communications support to the board, Mercer Island School District improvement stand.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna bring up uh, our executive director of Learning Services, Nova Williams. Um, as she's coming up, we had a chance today, uh, the learning services team and myself to work with Dr. Ray Smith. But you're going to get a chance to be with tomorrow morning. Uh, and then he's going to work with our principals and our learning services team in the afternoon. Um, and he really did some work with us around our district improvement plan, as well as some other um. Aspects of how we can continue to be uh, a little bit uh, more strategic. How we can use student data, um, staff data and others to continue the great work. With that being said, um, we got carved up pretty well by uh, Dr. Smith uh, on our district improvement plan, which is why we wanted him here. And uh, we changed a bunch between what you saw, perhaps if you read it earlier this week, and then you pulled this up and you said, what happened to it? Um, so we've already started to adjust some things and make some changes. So um, I'll give that caveat and then kick it over to you, uh, Director Williams.
So uh, part of what we wanted to focus on this year that has not changed in the district improvement plan is that we put a fundamental one there at the top. Is kind of our primary focus going into this district improvement plan. Historically, we have as a team in learning services kind of felt like our district improvement plan hasn't been specific enough to really provide us the guidance in terms of what we want to monitor and uh, see progress in. So this year we took a different lens of towards that and we set uh, some goals. And then key performance indicators that we would monitor along the way. We initially had four categories, uh, four goals, and then we whittled them down to date to three. So that's what you have in there um, now. So we'll start with the achievement and opportunity gaps. The plan for this particular district improvement is that we will have a four-year cycle for this. So we'll monitor annually, we'll also be monitoring over the course of the year. But uh, we will be monitoring this in terms of the long term, because it won't take just one year to do. So one of the things that uh, Ray was talking to us about today is effect size, and that was a big portion of our learning. So we were talking about how do we monitor about our kids? And um, that was really where we went with our achievement and opportunity gaps. So the goal there is that by June of twenty twenty-eight, all schools will close achievement gaps and all student groups. We'll have a particular focus on students with disabilities and English language learners as measured by an effect size. So uh, he has a tool that will help us calculate the effect size based on the scores that we receive from our assessments. Uh, and that would be measured three times a year at a minimum. So um, we'll use that as our, our first tool.
And tomorrow we'll spend time in the morning talking about effect size and that'll be part of our professional development.
Our second goal is around the continuum of services, which uh, is just sort of a generalized term. But where we wanted to get more specific is really moving toward multi-tiered systems of support. So our different schools are in different places as far as that's concerned. Um, and just as sort of a backdrop there, um. The RTI triangle, response to intervention has three tiers. So you've got tier one, which is really meant to be good for about eighty percent of the population. And then you have tier two, which is ten to fifteen percent, and then the remainder is in tier three, uh, which means that they need heavy support in terms of their instruction. MTSS is the new model for that, not new, but uh, it basically accounts for um, behavioral academic pieces. So it's not just about uh, the academic side. So we've got behavioral as a part of it, academic as a part of it, and social emotional as a part of that. So our focus toward this will work with the MTSS fidelity checklist, which is a tool, essentially a rubric, which will help us monitor our growth. So we'll do that over the course of the year, as well as monitor that annually. Um, the eighty percent that you see right there is uh, what is the measure of full implementation in terms of implementation practices? So that is our minimum expectation of eighty percent. We'll be hopeful for more of that. Um, and that may vary based on the levels of the schools as well. Our last one is a little bit of integration about both of the aforementioned goals. So that's targeted professional learning. Uh, we're really focusing on that multi-tiered systems of support and being very clear about that. And helping staff understand it and how to differentiate within their classrooms and support them with that work. Um, and we're hoping to see at least eighty percent of staff report increased confidence in employing those strategies in their work. If you flip to the second part, this is where a lot of changes happened. Um, so what we did is we identified uh, key performance indicators of what we would look for to measure whether or not we are achieving our goal. So goal number one around achievement gaps, we will be looking specifically at early literacy rates. Um, and there's some specificity around that in terms of what is statistically appropriate uh, for kids. We are also going to be monitoring our report card, as well as our uh, Washington State Improvement Framework to see if our student groups are making progress along this pathway. And then part of what we talked about today that was a new addition is that disruptive behavior piece of thing and how that impacts student learning. Um, and so the behavioral element of MTSS kind of fits into our achievement gaps uh, there. Under targeted professional learning, um, there is a specific component that we've identified in the Danielson framework, which is the tool used to evaluate teachers. And uh, we focused in on one B, which is about knowing and valuing students. So that would be part of our professional learning. Uh, and then we also want to see, and we want to target the group of students who are in that tier two and tier three. The tier two and tier three needs of students. Um, and so part of that professional learning will help support teachers in reading the needs of those kids, which is part of that personalized instruction. The last category for some of our key performance indicators, um, we are intending to develop, it's actually reframing one of our existing committees. To help focus on the improvements related to MTSS in our district and to provide some specificity around that, that group's work. Um, we are also hoping to track and monitor the increased positive parent and student responses to the E E S data that we get. Um, and we'll, we will have to create some additional surveys to measure that across the year, so that we can accommodate changes if we need to. We'll have additional professional learning opportunities specifically related to that. And then um, one of the last things there is just growth after intervention. So a big portion of MTSS or the whole purpose of it. Is really to try to reduce the number of students who continue to need or continue to have to have tier two or tier three services. And so that will be part of what we're monitoring is the decrease of students who will need those particular services.
Can I just ask, you do the E E S once a year right now?
Yeah.
So are you saying you do it more often?
We will create a survey of our own that has similar questions in order to.
And maybe do it like twice a year or something?
It'll probably be four times.
Totally, yeah.
So we'll see.
That's a challenge.
Not for everyone.
Right, but that's a challenge to get.
Yes.
You willing to respond.
We won't necessarily have that for everyone. It'll probably be targeted.
And one of the things that we've talked about, especially MTSS is, you know, it's not about students who aren't yet at. Grade level or who aren't achieving. It is about all students. And so we have students who come in and they're achieving. Uh, a year and a half above or wherever. And so how do we make sure at minimum they're still a year and a half? If not, how do we accelerate theirs? And so it's, the systems aren't about one particular profile of students. The systems are about all students and you'll see some of that reflected in some of the growth or some of the school improvement plan goals as we start moving forward.
Yeah, we sort of take it as a diamond instead of a triangle, so that we sort of have both ends of our spectrum in terms of that curve.
I was, I, I absolutely like this. I, I, I reviewed this part of um, earlier today. And clearly before you've made any changes, and I was loving all the language, and I think that this is definitely. Um, moving in the right direction where really, I mean, I was, I, I, yeah, I was going to encourage the focus to really be on the growth of each student. And, and whatever emphasis needs to be, but you know, yes.
Yep, it's all.
I guess one of the things I wrestle with, going back to my experience hiking in the John Muir Trail, is what I think makes it beautiful is differentiation. And sort of using that, you know, metaphor in terms of like how do we create a nature, nurture an environment that allows. Various individuals thrive in their own unique way. One of the terms we use a lot is achievement gap, but that seems like you're trying to get everyone to the same place. And that seems to me sort of more like a monoculture, right? We're trying to grow some like, if we're a big agribusiness and every, trying to get everyone to the same. And the truth of the matter, I think, that we all know is we're all very different and have strengths and weaknesses. And so just push back a little bit, and I know it's the general framework and lan- language of achievement gaps. But I find it seems to be more obfuscating than illuminating. And then, you know, there's a lot of talk about MTSS and I support the clarification. That's for all students because I mean, sort of the lead in was that for twenty percent or, you know, for five or ten. And so like I question, you know, or I would just, we'd like to see a more robust discussion of what it means for everyone to grow rather than what seems sometimes to steep into the conversation, how to get every student to the same place.
Yeah. And I'm going to say two things. One is, I want you to jump in. Two is tomorrow with Dr. Smith. Those will be some of the conversations that we'll be having about that exact thing, especially around fundamental one and where it would be. So excellent segue and actually to tomorrow's conversation.
Yeah, a couple of things. The achievement gap piece is language really talking specifically about the way the Washington State Improvement Framework works is that it monitors different student groups and they should all theoretically be achieving at the same level. However, they're not. So for example, students with disabilities do not achieve at the same level as their typically developing peers. The idea and framework of MTSS is that it's actually for a hundred percent of students. And it outlines the idea of each of those tiers being what they need so that they can then achieve at that level. So it's not necessarily saying that they'll all achieve at the same level. It's just that they're receiving what they need in instruction to be successful.
I want to do a comment, but I heard you kind of gasp and I think you were a space first before I do.
Yeah, I was just like, I appreciate the focus on like personalization because like I tutor for some kids through like our school student program, for example. And a lot of like the parents that I've talked to, they're like, oh yeah, like our student, like sometimes they feel like they're not challenged in this, but then they're struggling in this. So it's like all about keeping the education like personalized. So I really appreciate like that focus.
Thank you.
My question is related to, I'm sorry, I can't hear just, okay. The opportunity, the achievement and opportunity gaps that if those particular community, uh, stood with disabilities and like English. I'm sorry. So those are the groups that we feel that are the ones that have the biggest gap. And I'm also curious, I think, I know that compared to all the districts in the area, it's not necessarily the groups that you might focus necessarily. And also wondering how also other communities that in other foundational aspects are not represented in maybe a class or thing like that, how are we there and are we looking at that less too? Although it might not be the main focus that we don't kind of lose that, that we also need to ensure that we are representative people.
I think that that could fit into one of our action items under each of these. We'll have some action items there. So that would be a great addition to our action items.
I have a question, which is just thinking back to that first slide where you talked about in the left column, English language learners and children with disabilities. But you're talking about like sort of eighty percent improvement in certain things or that was on the other side of the slide, but.
Yeah, the eighty, you know, that fifteen-ish percent and then the remaining percent is really about the typical percentage of students who are successful with that level of support is really what that's about. But the other side of it is really just about their accessibility to find the needs that they or finds the resources that they need in order to be successful.
Okay. And a key to it is making sure that we are not static and that we realize that students move in and out based on wherever we are. And so one classroom, it may shape up where it's fifteen percent and the classroom next door, it's only four percent there. And it's being nimble enough to understand that at the classroom level so that we know where we need to regroup.
I think the reason that that number jumped off the page for me is that as an OT, usually when we set goals, we're like this child is going to exhibit, you know, eighty percent. You know, less disruptive behavior or like eighty percent of times he'll be able to write his name, you know, that kind of thing. So I was kind of like, wait, like if we're talking about eighty percent of students achieving, you know, X, Y, Z, are we talking about eighty percent of students achieving eighty percent of their goal? They're complicated in my head.
Well, the students who are actually not successful on those outcome assessments are really the kids that would need tier two and tier three supports.
How do you choose students with disabilities and English language learners?
Yeah, so we have in our demographics and we, we use the Washington State Improvement Framework and it's by school. They don't do it by district. So we take a look at that and then we kind of evaluate what's the greatest need. Historically here, it's been students with disabilities. And then it kind of ebbs and flows between students who are learning English as a second language, as well as other demographic areas. So those two are kind of the target in that regard. Our English learners don't necessarily test on the same test as everybody else if they've not been here for more than twelve months. So we'll have to take into account those as a part of our data collection to determine if they found success on those assessments, which translates for our English learners to exit rates, higher exit rates out of those services.
And so they're the farthest from institutional just.
Yeah, there's the biggest discrepancy between other learners and these two groups of learners.
And do you separate out students with disabilities? I mean, do you?
So in our data.
There's a learning disability or cognitive dis, I mean.
Oh yeah, no, it's sort of all couched as the same thing in the state frameworks is students with disabilities. It doesn't matter what disability. But they're all sort of captured in the same category.
Okay. And then we assume that their individual IDP kind of evens that out in terms of.
That is what it's supposed to do, yes. It's supposed to help give them access to core content.
So it will be evolving. One of the goals we have is, or I guess not a goal, an objective is to really think about these and you heard Nova say, trying to monitor these much more frequently so that we are getting information back from our system, from our students. So we're making adjustments on the fly. So that'll be a change that we'll be seeing as we move forward. And then, yep. And then next week or in two weeks, we'll hear from our middle school or high school and then in the November meeting, we'll hear from our elementary schools.
Great.
Yeah, thank you. Moving on to to me, Board WELZ 1250 students have covered the board. Our student representative is from Georgia.
All righty. Oh, I think Andrew's in the left side.
Yes. Okay, there's a lot of stuff that happens.
Okay, to start off, yesterday was our first meeting with SSA. And it was really exciting. Dr. Rondo can say a little about it too, but students seemed really motivated. We started out with like some icebreaker kind of like activities and then we did explain like the four Bs and then we probably mentioned this before, but like this year, we're really trying to focus on reducing like barriers for our students and specifically like new students. So we're gonna, we already started brainstorming various questions and things that we can ask our new students and like kind of build programs and like events to help our new students like transition. And then after that, we might continue and like work on other projects that are related to reducing barriers for students, but not necessarily new students. So yeah, that's just like our focus in the beginning. And yeah, so really excited for the year of SSA.
Yeah. And then at the elementary, the fifth graders at Lake Ridge are going to Islandwood in just three weeks. So students are super excited for that. The students are also really looking forward to the end of the year, like fifth grade musicals and the fifth grade party. Also, Lake Ridge has a talent show that will happen a bit later in the year and Clint has already started for all of that. As well, the fifth grade band or a shred choir has also started up. These students eat twice a week in the morning before school. And they have all on a family that comes up on the twenty fifth, where they can look before at the football game then. And the elementary's also recently had their picture days and especially you can see Sylvester, Mr. Allen and Mr. Anthony who dyed their hair for picture day, which is super fun. Elementary's also had their curriculum nights. And West Mercer Kingdom Ramirez also had some money to visit their classrooms, which is super fun. Also in that photo there, you can see cross braid levels, the small group intervention extensions that have been added to the core content level. So students can get like some more targeted instruction at their level. As well, elementary schools are hosting eight through five math night on the fifteenth of October at Northwood to talk about the I grade and math curriculum. They're going to do a modern lesson to showcase how that curriculum works.
Yes. And in addition, there's been a lot of fun back to school assemblies for the students. And our SSA members were talking about how, how fun it is to be with all their fellow classmates again. And also to recognize bullying, National Bullying Prevention Month. The cast from the Taproot Theater went to Lake Ridge to perform a play focused on bullying prevention and celebrating differences and how to welcome newcomers. And this was facilitated by the Lake Ridge PTA. So another demonstration of how amazing our PTA is. And then at the middle school, the middle school, there's unreported, a lot less complaining about the yonder couches. Apparently it's going pretty good. And a lot of them said that the bags, bags have been working and that things have been going smoothly and like people are adjusting. And reporter Sammy West from the KUW news station came and like interviewed the teachers, administrators and students about the new cell phone policy. And then in addition, eighth grade web leaders hosted a sixth grade donut feed where they welcomed sixth graders with free donuts. And it's just great to see the intergrade connections and welcoming all the students to the middle school. And then the middle school sports, including girls volleyball and boys and girls across country have had great seasons and are continuing to do amazing. And you can see there's a lot of attendance. So I'm so glad that there's, there's a lot of attendance at all of our middle school sports.
Yeah, so all the seventh grade social studies classes are learning what Washington State geography. This is what I said, seventh grade class, because that's to consider how they learn, what they learn is important for the environment. So they're learning how to like protect the environment and stuff. The ISMF spring musicals also going out to be frozen for this year. It's actually directed by two of the eighth grade SSA members. They're both super excited about that. Middle school's also been initiating a lot of new spirit days. They've been doing color wars, you can see there that they had last Friday. We have a little bit of competition, winning grade, want a teacher dare, which sort of means that they can like dare a teacher to do anything in a funny outfit or anything like that. So super fun. Then at the high school, the high school also recently added a lot of games to the lunchroom that have been super popular. Students are playing like Uno, Jenga, apples to apples. So it's really been a great room for students to connect now that they can't just sit on their phones at lunch.
Yeah. And then in addition, we had our homecoming assembly.
It's a great photo by the way. We should put it on the.
Yeah. It's more safe than safe. We kind of ripped this off of Wolves newsletter, but yeah, probably was a little stupid. It was a little bit too happy, but. But yeah, in addition, we had our homecoming assembly, which is full of spirit. And yeah, the freshmen, especially in part of SSA are super like excited to see all the spirit and like are really like, we're really surprised about like all the spirit at the assemblies and on Spirit Fridays. So that's been exciting. And then also Drill and Cheer had amazing performances like usual and they're both going to be attending a lot of competitions, including Cheer, because I know Cheer in the past hasn't attended as many. So the caliber has definitely like increased for both teams. And then in addition, Julius Perez gave a short speech on safety during homecoming as a representative of the same club. And that was really a nice message for students to be reminded of what to be aware of on homecoming and being safe. Yeah. And then the homecoming dance was also decently attended and ASB, I'm pretty sure made some profit this year. And some new things that ASB introduced this year were having food. So they, when, once you get in, you get a complimentary food ticket and then you can buy like cupcakes and like drinks and sodas. So that's something that definitely attracted people. And yeah, and then the next slide, we have a video of what it looks like because you guys wanted to see. My freshman year was in the commons. So it was like more, it was like less like a dance kind of thing. So I'm glad that they like block it out. And it was a whole process for ASB to lay out the carpet and like you like decorate that whole gym. So it was great. And we thank hope ASB for running that. And then another homecoming festivity that came boss over is the parade. If you guys didn't go there or like if you didn't attend, yeah. It was downtown and it was really exciting to see all the different groups. And somehow it's included the drama programs, Little Shop of Horrors, like Venus flytrap float thing. And that was really cool. And their show's going to happen in November and I know that they've been doing a lot of outreach for that. And yeah, and Band Drill and Cheer, as well as programs like Radio and Wrestling had their floats. And it was really a great community event.
Yeah. Chinese community members serve teachers and staff, a bunch of blue cakes and Asian tea. The members on the Chinese festival, the Chinese association, sorry. And the city of Mercer Island also held a mid-autumn carnival recently that was really nice and a really great gathering. The marine science class also recently went out on a sailing trip. They've been learning a lot about sailing and helped like collect some data that was focused on how climate change was affecting the area there. So it's a really great experience for the class and really was great to set a basis for that year. And then the AP environmental science class also got to go on a field trip to visit the local sewage plants and learn about the sewage process. Also a great concept for that class. This course have also been doing well. I think we talked about it last meeting, but senior Owen Howell broke the national record for the high school boys cross country at the Douglas Dexter. As you can see, it was a very exciting finish. Football's also been doing super well. They've so far become undefeated. It has more games coming up tonight, one of which is going on right now. They were also recently named the team of all five thousand dollar Friday winner, which was super exciting.
Yes, a lot of exciting games. And then in addition, we had nine MIA students named national merit semifinalists. And it's really crazy to see like we have incredibly strong students coming to our schools and this is like, nine is a crazy number. So really proud of all those students that made it there. And in addition, we had senior Leisha Lane who won a five thousand dollar college scholarship for the Toys for Kids Foundation. And Lucy, Dr. Rondo and I also got to see the founder of Toys for Kids, Rick Rids, and the son of the other founder, former Seattle Mariner, Dave Henderson, surprised Leisha with this five thousand dollar check, which she will be receiving five thousand dollars for the next four years to help go to college. And this scholarship represents like high schooler, high school seniors who reflect the values of upholding high standards and commitment to the community. And it's just so heartwarming to see all the work that she's done and her getting recognition for that.
Yeah. And then for open enrollment, a lot of SSA members have told us that they really felt like meeting new students has been really great for them. They feel like it's helped them like gain some perspective on other people around them and have definitely like made it feel like a more welcoming community here with all the new students. So it's definitely been going great. And then on top of that, as people adjusted, daughter poses in reflection time. One area of concern for some people is that some teachers are releasing kids late and causing them to be tardy for their next class. So students are really fearing reflection time as tardies and unexcused absences have been building up as the year goes on. And also well, different teachers have also had some different definitions of tardiness. You know, some teachers are like one minute late and others are considered like five minutes late. So with some poor tardies, equally in reflection time, it has been so stressful for some students. But in general, there has been a lot less complaints about the yonder couches. And I think the reflection time is definitely needs some people to attend school more.
Yes. And then in addition, students are glad that the district and teachers are recognizing all the different cultural, unreligious holidays and not a side of homework or tests on significant dates. And sports coaches are also recognizing these holidays and excusing absences for those practices, which is really great to see. And then in addition, a lot of freshmen are like happy to see their teachers giving them leeway now that they've like transitioned into middle to high school. And there's also a lot of great extra help opportunities for students to gain before and after school and like kind of meet with their teachers for more personalized help. And then finally, as we know, the graduation date was released to be June sixteenth. There's definitely been some rage from the senior class because this is a little later than usual. But like, and we will be staying at school till June thirteenth, which is a little longer than I wanted to, but it's okay. The students are excited for school or wait, oh yeah, but like with any change, our community will adapt to it for sure. It's better than not graduating. So yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, and also students are excited to be off from school tomorrow. And we also want to say a big thank you to all of our educators and teachers who will be going through training tomorrow to help teach us better and be better mentors for us. And yeah. And then additional aside note is next week for the school board panel, we sent out a survey to our student body. And we're, we have, we're currently looking through all of the responses and developing a question list and we'll send it to guys before the end of the weekend, early, early next week.
Yeah.
So that graduation date is actually not that much later than it normally is. Normally it's like the Thursday before that. So that graduation date is actually not that much later than it normally is. Normally it's like the Thursday before that. Last year was especially early because of facilities. That just, just Maybe the lunch have missed the Friday. Thank you. Any questions?
Because we did screenshot a lot of these from the district Instagram, so yeah, we're using his photos.
Okay, moving on to to see board policy eight hundred oh nine communications support to the board, superintendent recommended policy revisions to board policy thirty-two oh five sexual harassment of students prohibited.
Great. Director Battersby took notes, we compared them, tried to make some additions into the policy. And then, as we also mentioned, we bring forward the procedure, so that you can see how that is backed up as well. When she first sent me the procedure to look at, I kicked it back and I said, I, you know, I don't see the red line version, and then she kicked it back to me and said, the whole thing's been overhauled, it would have been one big red line. So you're getting the brand new one. And you'll notice that there's actually two procedures for this now. One's really about, as she said in the notes here, about how we're gonna carry it forward, and the other part's really about the grievance process. And so trying to separate those out. So I am happy to try to answer them with the best of my ability. If we can't get to consensus and we need to go back for clarification from Aaron, we certainly can, but I would open it up to you for a discussion.
Um, yeah, I think it generally looks good. I mean, I think, one, I think their language that is boilerplate, that is in, I know there's almost seventeen hundred pages of commentary on the updates, the title line. But in terms of the actual updated language when it comes to the notification requirements, at least pursuant to thirty-four CFR one oh six point four four C one. It's an employee who has information about conduct that reasonably may constitute sex discrimination, has a duty to report. And I believe that that standard is, I think, comprehensive and clear. And I, I would urge the board to do it often, and it's also just standard language that's been put forward by the Biden administration. Other than that, it looks good. And, and that's, just to be clear, that is a recommendation for the policy side of the change.
No, it would be in thirty, it would be in thirty-two oh five, where it says staff responsibilities and training. The change would be any school employee who has information about conduct that reasonably may constitute sex discrimination is responsible for informing their supervisor or the district's Title IX coordinator.
Where are you?
Where are you? I don't see it.
It's under, it's staff responsibilities and training.
Bottom of three.
It's the bottom of three. It's just importing the language that boilerplate in the regulation, which I think just has information that reasonably may constitute. And to me, that's clear, covers the hypotheticals that I have in mind when it's what's a sensible reporting standard.
So you want that added to this?
I wanted just to read any, I believe it should read any school employee who has information about conduct that reasonably may constitute sex discrimination and/or sex-based harassment, and it just hasn't written.
Is that the third paragraph? I'm sorry.
No, like the paragraph that we have right now is witnesses, which is not.
We need to report about it otherwise.
Yeah, and yes, I believe that should be changed to has information, which is, again, this is what about conduct that reasonably may constitute.
And that language is?
That way there's no confusion of what constitutes a report, like I wasn't aware, I mean, I wasn't aware, even though I should have been aware, just very simple.
Red place, otherwise becomes aware, would you just add it? Otherwise, because, you know, witnesses receives report, otherwise becomes aware.
Just has information covers all of that. Has information about conduct that reasonably may constitute sex discrimination.
Would you want to take out, you'd want to take out the witnesses?
So it would impugn that. I mean, let that be in addition to.
Yeah, I have other language too.
I have, I have a proposal that, you know, once we finish talking about anything else, that we get a clean copy, and then you mark proposed language for what you're talking about. We can put it on for a third reading.
Red line that one line, because I, it's that way we're all.
Yeah, that works. We can send it in the third reading. I mean, like with the, with the
We'll do clean with your changes and then send it through.
Because I like, I like the reference to the CFR, because in terms of there's already, in terms of the definition of sexual harassment, if the CFR definition is used, so I thought that adds consistency as well.
And I support both, maybe I am, and you're with the adding language versus like just cut and replace.
Yeah, yeah. Well, once he see the red line too, you can have to decide that. This is too, yeah, jumbled for me, but I have an opinion, but the definition makes a lot sense. Okay, anything else?
Yes, when I got checking with Aaron, that is consistent with the other side of the school.
Okay, so let's, unless there's anything else, we'll clean this up for the third, take out all the red, the red and blue, and I feel like I even saw orange. Yeah, see, there it is. We'll do a clean copy on the agenda, not a consent, because I want to make sure that everyone really sees it, and then and then Dan will add a red line also. Once you see it on, once you see the clean copy, add a red line and get that to Michelle, and then she can post both the clean copy and the red line. Sound good?
Great.
Thanks. You're really motivated to get them. It was good, it was good. No, we did a lot of great discussion last time, and it leads us to consensus, which is really great. Because that's the whole point of, of these policies and, and having all our viewpoints. Okay, so Republican, no, consent agenda.
I agree with that. We approve the consent agenda as public.
Any discussion? All in favor? And to keep by saying aye, students? And board, any opposed? Two zero five zero. Board announcements, inquiries, and reports, legislative report, nothing for that? Okay. Just those attending the Wasda Conference got proposed flight options from Michelle, so let's get that back to her. Unless you want to draw. It's easy.
I know, I'm coming with you.
I, and I'm leaving earlier, so.
I have a board announcement, which is just that I, that's next. Can I go first? Just I tend to see the PTA DEI first meeting of the year, PTA DEI committee. And it seems like it's like recharged and ready for action. Lots of great people on it.
I don't have anything to say, but I just have to, I, I am just being grateful for you to allow me to arrive a little bit late on Thursday, so I will connect my phone. And we'll figure out a way to grab me, so when I'm here, I, I'm a hundred percent here, and I'm here. So thank you, and there's nothing to report except love the parade. It was fun to see it in a, it was fun to see it downtown. I was hoping more kids looking for candy, because I saw more teams of the kids. But so that's fine too, that it was a good fun.
Yeah, with it being more, it's kind of hard to get up. Yeah, and I know a lot of people on SATs and stuff, so maybe families are.
Again, I will say that, that they were like the, the various elementary kids and, and, you know, different games on activities for Saturday morning, so. And I'm so sorry, I will say, have to say, like, it was also against the for, for the students that they leave the parade and then they lost to the game, and they had like an hour or two of intermediate from the feedback that I got from the band kids that they felt kind of odd not going from the parade to the game. That was kind of an interesting experience, and that was it. But it was, it's the parade, so I was.
Yeah, the parade was ten thirty and the game was at one.
That was deeply pleasant, that afternoon game. It was deeply pleasant. It was like so nice. For, for all day, like. Because they had the call time, like eight o'clock. For the, because they did the bus. Did you get dressed?
Trust me, call time for a basis was one AM.
Yeah, so I just, that I went to the high school pack meeting yesterday, or this morning. And it was, and it was a break the road, but the thing, and the thing that I'm going to particularly bring out is that we have a little update on the cellphone policy. And there were so many fewer violations and problems than I ever anticipated. And I think it's important for, you know, our community members who are maybe like cellphone policy curious about like how that was going to go. You know, only like a fair tenth of our student body is ever even has like a cellphone violation, which is a lot lower than I thought it would be. And it's really just like three a day or something, and you know, it's, it was impressive. I think that the, I'm going to say the student feedback has been unrealistically positive. I think that people are working, and this, you know, the spirit of the cellphone policy is working well, and I was one of those people that was, you know, skeptical about the cellphone banning when we proposed it, and but I see that our district now has gone from being sort of like leading edge of that, like cutting edge, and really showing how a policy can be implemented well. And can really help student learning and the educational environment. So I think in this case, Fred was ahead of me with inspiration and insight of where I was on this, on this subject, and I think that he's been proven right, and I've been proven wrong, because the environment in the school is so much different than it was with cellphones, and I think the learning environment from the reports we've gotten back from teachers is so much different, and I know the students are thrilled not to have their ones during the night, so.
I didn't have any committee meetings, the only thing on sort of diversity, equity, inclusion, sort of a public service announcement is I recently became acquainted with Filipino rap courtesy of KEXP and Eastern Echoes, and it's phenomenal. Also really interesting, because like there's a history of serial colonialization, so like the language blends a lot of Spanish, English, Tagalog, Chinese, and so it's interesting seeing linguistic influences and how it comes together in an artistic medium, and it sounds good.
I attended
I know what you're saying.
Oh, thank you. IMS pack meeting. And the focus this year is on tier one supports, and I'm really excited about it. I learned lots of new things and lots of new things happening, so I'm excited to ask more questions about it. And it was, it was a really great group of involved parents and and teachers and admin to really take a look at what tier one supports are and, and what's happening and how they're supporting it. It was, I've got a little update on the phone policy for the middle school too, and it seems to be the majority of the behavior referrals right now. And then this, yesterday was the PTA council meeting that I missed, because I didn't give them the email. But now I, we've corrected that. And I hear they were going to talk about the scooter, scooter issue, so I don't know if that's something that, do you want to just mention? Yeah, just because I don't, you guys come in more than I do at this point.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum was there, and he serves on that committee. I think his original update was that the city was really thinking about this for to be ready for next spring or summer, thinking that the rain might deter some of the riders. The feedback from our PTA and our parents was, that will be too late, it needs to happen sooner. And so he was going to take back to the city manager, chief of police, that feedback and start working on something that could be a new city ordinance or some new direction about the scooters. There was a lot of conversation around, you know, the different types, you know, Class C scooters versus motorbikes, and I think it is extremely complex in terms of where regulations as they're currently written, and the intersection with these new bikes that are completely different, the laws weren't written for that. The main concern that everyone shares, and I think you've shared it, I've shared it, is the last thing we want is attraction. And I think we're all united on that. And that would be the worst case scenario and the best case scenario is we can do not only education for the students, but also to help them understand. You know, these are vehicles that can get you from one place to the other, but they can also cause a lot of disruption in the community as well as potentially put lives in danger. So lots of great conversation. They're going to go back to the city. We're continuing to do work. The middle school's working hard on trying to get some education with the police and others, so lots of things happening, but there was a robust conversation.
Could I ask some? So I imagine that it is making policies to ensure safety when using squares or. Yes, and I know that the city is going through the planning of the ten, ten year plan on how the city will go, and I'm curious if the school is willing to do like a, facilitate with the students kind of a conversation with the city on how they view the use of these vehicles to facilitate the independence, but also the city and the community to help the students understand the safety and some of the partnership when the regulations come through, that students, school packages, the vehicles, that that voice is also heard from the other side, so it's just.
Yeah, I meet with Jesse Vaughn, the city manager, I believe, next week or the following week, I can't remember, and this is on our agenda as well, and so absolutely, I think it's a great idea that I'll add into that as well.
Yeah, like I'm glad there's a discussion about it. I'm, I'm a cyclist, I like speed, I like freedom, but I'm pleasantly surprised there hasn't been a tragic accident involving scooters, and I, I think more needs to be done. And we can sort of explore what those options look like in terms of whether it's ticketing or, you know, information. But just to try to keep everyone safe and, you know, knock on wood that, you know, we continue to avoid accidents, but I not sure that will always be the case, but we change.
I would also just like to chime in to say it's not just about wearing helmets and speed. There's a lot of kids that are riding with no hands, and that's just like shocking to me, as both like a driver and a parent, because like the, the electric bikes like may be stable enough that you can just kind of sit back and like cruise, but if your hands are like not on the the handlebars and something happens suddenly, a car pulls in front of you, suddenly you have no control like that, that is going to be a little badass.
And it's definitely not, seeing a lot of like, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I will add that I am, I also, since I'm very happy to see that kids are doing that that they're walking to the door, biking their outdoors. So the whole point is not to put them in vehicles. It is to how can we make sure that it's a safety community for them to ride by themselves, be independent, and and have less cars in the island, in that sense.
You know, one, one question down the road to think about is whether, you know, if you want to ride an electric bike to the high school, for example, you need to take a safety class that would be offered by NYPD or by the city and get your like you know, kind of electric bike license for the high school, if you're going to be lifting your bike up at the high school, for example.
The biggest issue is at our middle school.
Yeah, I mean, even, I mean, it's high schoolers are the ones I see with the no hands, but yeah.
But the middle school, the ones moving in and out of the traffic and.
I think, you know, there's the fact that they can be on sidewalks, they can be in bike lanes, and they can be in lanes is a challenge, and we have. And we have instances of students running from the police on these things. And the police are not about to enter into a high-speed chase after a scooter to put other people in danger. But they've had lights and sirens going and kids take off and they get away. And so there is, you know, there's, this is a big community conversation that we're going to need to continue to have. I think the middle school has, you know, really tried to emphasize, hey, we can do what we can during on school grounds or whatnot. But that partnership, Aaron, I don't know if you want to chime in.
I think you guys are all right on. It's a real challenge. So we've been really focusing on when they get to campus to get off and walk the scooter. You know, there's the scooters, there's the bikes, the e-bikes. Some look like motorcycles and go as fast as motorcycles. So we've really focused on when they get on campus to walk it on campus and when they leave to walk it off campus until, and then after that, you know, when we tell, whatever we tell them, they're going to do what they're going to do. And so that's the focus. I think there's also some things about, you know, how do, how do those things affect some of the turf fields that are around here that could be chewed out by some of those bikes. But it's a real, it's a real challenge and it's probably, I would say on a nice day, there's probably forty to fifty of them that are ridden to school.
Yeah.
Way more of those bikes than your typical pedal bikes.
I mean, I guess like one thing to just consider for education, I think that'd be powerful, particularly at the middle school is just any, you know, assemblies where you have first person accounts of someone that has been, or been affected, you know, by an injury, like either fatal or, you know, debilitating. To, you know, well, I mean, to, you know, to make people aware of the risk because particularly young people like don't always appreciate, right? Like that they're not invincible. And, 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 I mean, I, like I said, I, I ride very fast. My bike can have injuries, but I'm an adult and. But, but yeah, like, but I think it's a conversation that needs to be, that needs to be had.
Yeah. Katie Yager has been working pretty hard on trying to develop kind of a series of, of experiences for kids. Whether it's from law enforcement, whether it's from people who have had, not tragic event, but an impactful event. I know her father actually does a lot of work around this. So she's trying to get him involved too with some, uh, FaceTime with kids. So we're, we're working on it. The challenging thing is how do you convince the kid, a thirteen-year-old that mainly boys? How do you convince thirteen-year-old boys that they're not invincible and something might happen? A hard conversation for that, but we're working on it.
Yeah, that's so sad. Like, I think there's a lot of, I bike a lot of race. And so like I was biking since like eighth grade. And so learning how to drive actually really helped me a lot on my bike. Like when you're younger, you don't really know how the rules of the road or if you've been in a car, but you've never really driven one. Especially like educating like how you can like be able to car and the pedestrian on a bike is really difficult. It's like your e-bike, you can't really be on sidewalks. You're kind of like a car. So sort of learning those rules of the road helped me at least for more safe on my bike. Because a lot of it is that interaction between bikes and cars that can be really fatal.
And this is why we need students on those committees, because we're way past that and you're not. So thank you. That's a great perspective.
And, and that's a great point too. And I think one of the people where we hear the most feedback from is actually our bus drivers. Because they're seeing these, they're driving these, I don't know how many thousand pound vehicles they, a bus is, and trying to, to stop or to swerve or to maneuver with kids on their bikes, maybe on the side or sidewalk or shoot through intersections. So we hear, and actually bus drivers send us some videos sometimes of, hey, here's an example of what we're seeing. So I think that's another, that's really concerned about position.
Okay. That's it?
Well done. Until tomorrow.
Motion. I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, students? And directors? Two zero five zero, we are adjourned at six fifty-five.